Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the February 12th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order if you would all stand for the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hubbard. Commissioner Bradshaw.
Present.
Commissioner Helms.
Here.
Commissioner Kirkham.
Here.
Commissioner Morris.
Here.
Chairman Hassett.
Here.
Vice Chair Gillette.
Here.
Commissioner Patillo.
Yes, here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Rugi.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Automated announcements.
Anyone who has not signed in, please do so at the table located in the lobby. Should anyone wish to speak, please complete a request to speak form, which is also located on the lobby table next to the sign-in sheet. A request to speak form must be completed for each item you would like to speak on. Please note, there are stairs on the right, left, and center aisles, and we ask that you use caution when using the stairs. There is also a ramp located to the audience's left. If anyone has written comments, exhibits, petitions, photos, or letters they intend to present at today's meeting, have seventeen copies and give them to a staff member at the back of the auditorium. Staff member, please hold up your hand for the audience. If you do not have seventeen copies, you may use the overhead camera to present your documents. Please place your documents on the podium and line it up with the arrows indicated. If you want your documentation to go on record, you must hand them to the clerk after your presentation with the agenda item number clearly marked on the documentation. Members of the public cannot speak to staff members that are seated at the tables with microphones during the meeting. If you have questions, please see the staff member located in the back of the auditorium. All speakers will be limited to two minutes to make their presentation statements. Everyone, please turn off all cell phones or place them on vibrate during the meeting. If you must take a call, please leave the meeting area and go outside to have your conversation. We also ask the audience to refrain from talking with one another during the presentations and discussions. Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Everyone attending the meeting is asked to remember that the administrative building and campus are tobacco-free areas, which means no smoking is allowed from curb to curb. No food or drinks are allowed in the auditorium except for bottled water. If there are any items remaining on the agenda, the Commission will break for lunch for one hour, per the chairman's discretion.
The items with recommendation made by the Commission will be heard by the Board of Supervisors on Monday, March 3rd, 2025, at 9:30 a.m. in the same location with the exception of any continued items. The approval of October 9th, 2024, November 13th, 2024, and December 11th, 2024 meetings, an action item that you need done? Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That was probably a delay. Hearing none, item carries. Item one, Melanie.
Item one is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit for Assessor's parcel number 22720038 to allow for a 100-foot wireless telecommunication facility in a C2H highway commercial zone in the Fort Mojave vicinity. We have received one letter of opposition on this item. Staff does find that the application is proper for consideration, subject to the standard conditions.
Thank you. Opening the public hearing. Is the applicant present? Do you wish to speak at this time?
Chairman Hassett, I believe he's on teams.
Oh. The applicant on teams, and do you wish to speak at this time?
Yeah, good morning. This is Tom Johnson. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can. Name and address for the record.
Great. Tom Johnson, address 30767 Gateway Place, Rancho Mission Gayo in California. I am the applicant for this project. As staff has noted, this is a new 100-foot-tall monopole placed on a vacant piece of land in this commercial district. Overall, the objective here is just to continue to enhance the public services of this communications facility, and this area had some service issues that Verizon is trying to fix right now and ensure that the public has continued use throughout this corridor, obviously with some of the future development that looks like may be taking place in support of hospital traffic as well. If you have any questions regarding the design or the project, I'm here for anything that you have.
Thank you very much. There's no one signed up to speak. Are there any others wishing to speak on this item? Questions or comments from the commissioners for the applicant or staff?
Yes, I have a couple.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes. The property, I don't know where you're planning on putting the tower on the property, but it is within 500, 600 feet of two operating helipads, and I just wondered if anything's been cleared through the Federal Aviation Commission.
Yeah, so this location will be placed at the very back of the parcel, so the farthest point away from those helipads. As part of our review process, we do need to obtain FAA clearance, and that is already in the works.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
First by Gillette.
Second.
Second by Kirkham. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two, Melanie.
Item two is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 22922024A from a C2 general commercial zone to a CMO, Commercial Manufacturing Open Lot Storage Zone, to allow for auto repair and open lot storage in the Fort Mojave vicinity. We have received one letter of opposition on this item. Staff does find that the application is proper for consideration, subject to the standard conditions.
Thank you very much. Looks like there's two people signed up to speak on this item. The applicant, Heather Wells, if you could please come down, and then also Kevin Thistle. Opening the public hearing. Name and address for the record when you're ready.
Heather Wells, 1370 East Valencia Road, Fort Mojave, Arizona 86426.
Morning.
Good morning.
Do you have any comments or anything you want to tell us about the project? You just open for questions.
Um, yes, I do. I think there's been a misconception with one of the residents in our area. The main reason for this application that I filed is just to upgrade the property. It is already a commercial property and has been for many, many years before. We bought the property four years ago. So with that upgrade, I'm just looking to do a small automotive repair and storage for like boats, extra vehicles, maybe a motorhome or two, nothing big or extravagant. I have read the opposition letter, and we will not be doing anything as far as heavy manufacturing or commercial vehicles of any sort. So I'm a bit confused for that letter. It's all just consumer vehicles that you and I all drive every day. Most of the residents that are surrounding the property that we are located on have come by my office and have given us their support. I've only seen one that's not supporting us. However, it's not really going to change much, just wanting to make a little extra money so I can retire someday and not have to work so hard.
I respect that. Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant? Well, she's up.
No, I just have a comment. I am concerned with the manufacturing part of it because even though your intentions are not to do it, that zoning would allow for heavy manufacturing.
And that's where I was confused. I had called the county several months ago in order to do asking what the process was so that I could do backyard storage for boats and motorhomes, and they said it would be the CMO. And we are currently a C2 for light automotive tires, lube, stuff like that. So I was just following the directions that I was given from the county offices to be able to do outside storage.
I personally would be more comfortable with a special use permit for the outside storage rather than converting it to...
I was unaware of that. I was just following...
That's my personal opinion.
I was just following directions. I know I was, while going through this process, the CMO is kind of, in my opinion, an extravagant description that I really won't be doing, won't be doing any manufacturing. We currently don't. We have no intentions on doing it. We have been there for four years now. We never have. We're not gonna. We just want to do some storage.
Chairman Hassett, if I could just provide some clarification there. So the CMO zone doesn't allow for heavy manufacturing. It does allow for light manufacturing, but it also allows for that open lot storage, that outdoor storage component that they're searching for. And there's no avenue to get a special use permit for outdoor storage in the existing zoning designation, so in order to allow for that outdoor storage, they would need to rezone to this CMO zone to allow for that.
Chairman Hassett, just if I could add as well, it looks like the surrounding properties in the nearby vicinity have that CMO zoning as well, and that's one of the recommendations from staff is it'd be a light vicinity. Another option that the Commission also has is if they don't want the manufacturing component zoning parcel, they could approve the zoning with the condition that there is no manufacturing. Like, that is an option as well.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Kevin Thistle, you're marked as the applicant as well, but you're also stating for this item. You... Oh, I'm so sorry. You're right. I will work on being able to read better. My apologies. No other questions or comments from the applicant or for the applicant? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Given that staff has said other properties in the area have this zoning, I'd make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay. First by Rugi. Second by Hellem. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye. Aye.
That Martin, and was that an opposition for... Is that Bradshaw? On teams?
No, it was a, it was four.
And I am four as well. This is Colin.
Only opposed is Martin, so item two carries. Item three, Melanie.
Item three is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan from a low-density residential land use designation to a general commercial land use designation and a rezone from an AR-10A agricultural residential 10-acre minimum lot size zone and AR-6A agricultural residential 6-acre minimum lot size zone and an AR-4A agricultural residential 4-acre minimum lot size zone to a C2H general commercial highway frontage zone, a C2 general commercial zone, and an R1 single-family residential zone for Assessor's parcel numbers 30631008C through 008G to allow for future commercial and residential development in the Golden Valley vicinity. We've received two letters of opposition and one letter of support for this item. The staff does find that the application is proper for consideration, subject to the standard conditions.
Thank you very much. Opening the public hearing. The applicant is most clearly present, so go ahead. Name and address for the record.
Kevin Thistle, 7383 Atticom Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada. I'm the architect on the project. I'm here with the owner, Mr. Peter Semino, who's here with me today.
Morning.
Hello. Good morning. Okay, we're excited to be here today. We think this is a good project for this community. I can go ahead and, I don't know if you can do the overhead for this plan that I have?
Yeah, there's a camera right there in front of you on the spot.
Oh, there we go. Okay, to the left of the site you'll see is Highway 68, which is the north portion of the property. Along the frontage of Highway 68, we're proposing a 42,500-square-foot neighborhood grocery store, and along the frontage of Highway 68, we have three fast-food pads adjacent to the grocery store on Teddy Roosevelt Drive. We have a combination convenience store and fast food along with gas pumps. That's kind of the commercial portion of the property. Directly behind that, right here, we're proposing a 154-unit mini-storage project. Directly behind that, we're proposing a 142-unit multifamily apartment project. And to the south of the project, we're proposing 15 single-family residential lots. In the southeast corner here, we're proposing the wastewater treatment facility. I understand that there may be one that is already existing about a quarter mile away. We're going to check into that to see if it's possible for us to tie into that. If it is available, we will pursue that and see how that goes. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, questions, comments for the applicant?
I don't think I, you know, I got something. I don't think I, uh, did you say you were going to have a store of some kind on Teddy Roosevelt and...
Or opposing right at this location?
Yes.
Here is a neighborhood grocery store.
Oh, that's what Golden Valley needs. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? No one else signed up?
Commissioner Patillo has a question.
Commissioner Patillo?
Um, yeah, what, um, have you looked into what some of your potential wastewater flows would be and what potential technology you would use to treat wastewater from such a project should the other plants not be available for you to hook up to?
To do is we looked at the adjacent property just to the west of us, a lot of single-family residential properties out in that location, and we saw about the approximate size of their treatment facility. We went through and evaluated approximately what our wastewater demand would be and came up with an approximate size as to what we figured the property would need to address that. Other than that, obviously, we'll have civil engineers that would be designing the system.
Public questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you. No other questions or comments? I would like to close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move of approval.
I'll second. First by Kirkham, second by Helms. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just like to thank everyone here, being out here for 26 years in the Mojave County and seeing the growth that's happened off of Stockton Hill, Andy Devine, and now what's happened between Bullhead and Kingman, Arizona, and the need for the grocery and for everything. It's, I'd just like to say thank you for the opportunity to be here with you folks and looking forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four, Vicki.
Agenda item four is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan to realign the general commercial land use designation and the suburban residential land use designation and property zone from an A general zone to a C2 general commercial on Assessor's parcel number 31613112A and from an A general zone to an AR agricultural residential zone on Assessor parcel number 31613112B, C, and D to bring properties into compliance and to allow for a restaurant in the Dolan Springs vicinity. Staff finds the application proper for consideration with standard conditions.
Thank you. Opening the public hearing. The applicant is present. Do you wish to speak at this time?
Eve Cracknell, Momcat Septic Design LLC, 5100 East Sapphire Drive, Prescott, Arizona, 86301.
Thank you.
I'm the, uh, the reason that we have a dual rezone here is on a residential parcel, we need to rezone to bring into compliance so that they, um, the environmental can go ahead and issue their discharge authorization for a brand-new septic system that was recently installed on Lot D. And then on Lot A, it's being rezoned commercial because the owner would like to put a food truck on that lot, but there are some caveats to putting a food truck on that lot, particularly the fact that in Mojave County, it's required that you have to have a fixed restroom, fixed restroom facilities, and, and I've advised them of that. But the bottom line on that is, we get a, we get a commercial parcel that's got, that's got street frontage, Chandel Norte, and it's a, it's about 150 yards north of Pierce Ferry Road. So, you know, if the owner doesn't want to go into the cost of putting in a fixed bath restroom facility, you know, she's got a lot with a commercial frontage, zone for commercial that she can sell. That's kind of the Cliff Notes version of the project.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments for the applicant? Appreciate it. And no one else signed up to speak. I'd like to close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Motion to approve that recommendation.
First by Martin. Second. And by Gillette. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Hearing none opposed. The item carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five, Vicki.
Agenda item five is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit for Assessor's parcel number 31025001 to allow for a private family cemetery in an AR-10A agricultural residential 10-acre minimum lot size zone in the Kingman vicinity. This parcel is 49.59 acres. We've received one letter of opposition. Staff finds the application proper for consideration with standard conditions.
Thank you. Opening the public hearing. Is the applicant present? Do you wish to speak at this time? Is the applicant on teams? There is no one else signed up to speak at this item, so I will close the public hearing and entertain a thought towards this item or a motion.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I didn't know what to, how to phrase that because I think there's some question. I think the applicant needs to be present.
Right.
Do you have questions for staff, or do you want to request the applicant to attend the next meeting and postpone this item?
I think that's a good idea.
That's a good idea.
I do have questions.
They should be here.
I would like to ask...
What?
They should be here at the next meeting.
Agreed, but we do have one question for staff. Commissioner Rugi?
Staff, are there any guidelines on having a cemetery next to residential lots?
Chairman Hassett, Commissioner Rugi, so the zoning ordinance allows for a cemetery in any zone with a special use permit. There are, they do have health, the public health department regulations for having a cemetery, so there are rules and regulations that apply to that through the health department, and there's also rules and regulations through the Arizona Department of Real Estate if you have a cemetery on the property. So they would be required to follow through both of those agencies' rules and regulations as far as the zoning ordinance is concerned and the land use. We would allow for it in any zone with that special use permit.
But we have no idea how large this cemetery is proposed to be, do we?
Proposed site is a quarter of acre, but the special use permit would allow them for the entire 36-acre parcel, correct? So instead of, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, and would they be tax-exempt on the whole property?
Chairman Hassett, Commissioner Martin, that is a good question that I do not know the answer to. I would have to do some research on that.
So in an effort to, not to cut anybody off, but in an effort not to kick this, you know, into a big conversation, I think there's some research on the Assessor's part for staff, and I think that we should make a motion to postpone this to the next item and require the applicant to be present.
Make a motion to postpone for the next session with the applicant present.
Second.
Are you good with that? No.
Oh. Just to clarify, maybe a motion to continue it. I think that's...
Oh, I'm sorry. Use my vocabulary better. So I would like to entertain a motion to continue this item to the following meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to continue this item to the next meeting.
Okay. First by Rugi, second by Morris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item six, Courtney.
Agenda item six, evaluation of a request to name a road alignment commencing in Section 4, Township 29 North, Range 15 West, terminating in Section 17, Township 30 North, Range 15 West to Glamping Ranch Road. Located in the Meadview vicinity, this is the same road alignment that was previously considered for naming. We have received two letters of opposition. Staff finds the application proper for consideration of the naming of the unnamed road alignment to Glamping Ranch Road, subject to the standard conditions.
Thank you very much. Opening the public hearing. Come on down.
Good morning, Honorable Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Kathy Tackett Hicks. I'm acting as the owner's agent. This is the second time you've seen a request for the road name here. It passed without a problem at the P&amp;Z last time. The board got it. There was a split decision because there's adjacent property owners that also had submitted a request for a road name through the state historical name process, which is, which is fine, except that process is extremely lengthy. I am back before you again with a slight modification of the road name called Glamping Ranch Road, and that road goes quite far. I had originally requested just a portion of the road. I was hoping we could only name a portion, and if you saw the map that staff had put up, it actually goes, it goes way up there. It's several miles long, but you can see on all the maps, it's called unnamed or unknown road. The major burn with this is that there is a huge commercial venture back up on the hill. They cover the back. If you can show this map, please. So the owner owns about half of this, this bottom area here, and there are many, many glamping sites, teepees, there's a restaurant back there, there's horseback riding, there's ATV, there's hiking, there's all kinds of stuff going on back there, and no one can see it from the road, which is awesome, but their major market is the Vegas area. People drive out at night. There's limited cell service there, and they've had a lot of people have to turn around because they don't know where they're at. The main purpose, and we're working with BLM as well, is to get a street sign there, a sign, just a little sign, so people can know where to turn, because if you go just a little further, you're already at the tribal property. So that's the whole thing. We've modified it to Glamping Ranch Road. That was taken from, last time, we had a couple letters of opposition, a couple letters of support, but one of the letters of opposition also suggested Glamping Ranch Road. I would tell you that the process and the road naming, I did go to the state historical downstairs secretary of state offices to find out that process. It's one of the very few in the state I haven't actually processed myself over the last 30 years. It's a lengthy process. It's currently under review for at least 60 or 90 days. The group only meets quarterly. The next meeting is April. I have no idea if this item will even be on it. I have no idea if the request even meets the state requirements. To me, it's iffy, but who knows? To me, it's iffy, but who knows? Having said all of that, I think once they get that, if everyone agreed it had to be changed, that's fine. They'll still have to come back to you, I believe, to get this street name like I'm doing right now, and this is going to be six or seven months down the road. I started this in August. I would ask you to please approve this request, and we'll run it simultaneous with the other one. It's a big problem that I would like to fix. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. There's nothing nefarious about this. We just need a street sign.
My only question, thank you very much.
Yeah.
My only question is that this commission already approved this, and it just got kicked back from the board of supervisors?
Yeah. There was a split decision because I don't really know.
Commissioner Hasset, just to clarify, so the board, this same road naming came before the commission previously. That went to the board. That road name was denied by the board. So this is a, yeah, it's the same road. They're trying to rename it for the same purpose. This is a new name proposal, so it's a new application.
They got denied purely, they didn't like the name, or is there a reason for denial?
Chairman Hasset, I don't know that they gave a specific reason at the meeting. I can't speak for all of the supervisors.
All right, thank you. Well, I'm okay with round two. Any questions for the applicant?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
You said there's a major business at the end of the road. What is the mailing address of that business?
I have no idea. It's probably on Shamrock.
Probably a PO box.
Right there, which again is you go up the road a little bit and cut over. No one knows where Shamrock is.
So is it known as Shamrock Road?
No. That Shamrock Road is an interior road on that existing subdivision. So that's a legal road, and I do believe the county address coordinator issued an address on Shamrock. So there's just nothing from Diamond Bar Road is the problem.
I don't know. The commission turned it down, I mean, if the supervisors turned it down once, they're probably going to turn it down a second time.
I hope not.
If it was a split decision, we have new people on the board.
I have one question.
Any other questions or comments for the applicant on this item?
Yeah, I have one. Isn't this, the road goes up so far, then there's a gate, then it switches over onto another piece of property?
There is if you go up there. There are some gates for some of the private property to keep out the cattle ranching at night. The group does close a gate to their facility, which is pretty extensive to keep out some of the cattle and wild animals.
They don't have any cattle crossings?
Oh, Lord, no. This is just a dirt road in the middle of nowhere. No, there are no cattle crossings.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the, for the applicant? If not, I'd like to close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
First by Gillette, second by Morris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Juan Kirkham. Motion carries. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. No, but she did. Item seven, comments from commissioners.
I got some pretty interesting.
Kirkham?
Yesterday, I was out riding on my side-by-side, and I went up by where the Rancho Santa Fe interchange is going to be. I couldn't believe after two weeks how far they've gotten on that. I was on a planning commission with Kingman about 10 years ago when we approved the general plan amendment and the rezoning, and I'm really, really excited to see that project moving forward. It's going to be a game changer for the industrial park and the airport. I'm really excited to see it, and it will be really, really welcome. It'll make, not only Kingman will benefit from it, but the county will also. Thank you.
Any other comments from commissioners? If not, item eight, call to the public. Nobody signed up. Anyone want to speak at this time? All right. Motion to close the meeting?
I'll make a motion to close.
First, second, all in favor?
Aye.
If you can turn.
There you go. Plant planning on that interchange.
You guys were not here, obviously.
Well, but it was never, no, it never, it never went anywhere. Yeah. Well, the reason why it didn't move was because they had to make a jump.
I had to do that, too. A meeting before that meeting, I was the only one here at the gavel.